Okay, public meeting order. And the first order of business is the Google Maps from June 27, which were previously sent to us. Are there any additions or corrections? Corrections or additions? Any? Is there a motion to approve without reading? Second?
I'll second it.
Move this afternoon on favor.
I understand.
Okay, next order of business is public meeting and hearing petitions. And first on the list is case 2023-15 at 165 Hawthorne Street, petitionary as acquisitions division LLC. Who is representing the street?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rick Foxer. And we are presenting 165 Hawthorne Street. Not really sure who's familiar with this building. But right now it is an 18-room SRO. Currently in kind of disrepair and mismanagement. We are proposing to reduce the number of SROs from 18 to 12. And we are also proposing six apartments on the first floor as well. We believe it's a better use for the building. We've been through this quite a few times in the city. We've done similar projects like this. Right now it's a very antiquated, shared bathroom type of a situation where it's being run. It's being run pretty poorly in the sense that they are now renting it out kind of like a hotel nightly, weekly, monthly. Some people have been there a little bit longer. But our idea for these buildings are to give a client a better living atmosphere, meaning give them their own bathroom, a little mini kitchen. You know, the units are definitely more of a micro type of situations. They're not extremely large units. It gives us a better affordability factor. It keeps us in a market where we serve a lot of local Chelsea type of clientele. We also serve a lot of clientele as well. But it's more giving people their own space rather than 15 people outside the door waiting for a bathroom in the morning, trying to get to work and hey, you know, knock, 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 you're in there for too long and so on and so forth. We don't believe in running buildings that way. So we designed our buildings. The minimum square foot is that's always allowed in the building for was about 150 square feet. Our units sometimes run around 200 square foot range. But as you can see, the demising walls between the units are fully insulated with sound control. They get their own full bathrooms. They have plenty of room by code for their own bed. We normally set up in these areas beyond the bed, we give them a little working desk with internet access and so on where they can run, you know, more of a, if they'd like a home office or work from home or whatever the case. We provide it fully furnished. It's fully furnished with televisions, with the beds. Everything pretty much is supplied by us. But we don't want to run these like a, like I said, a nightingale hotel type of situation. This is what's being run currently. And it's adding its difficulties and its problems. Currently there's some evictions going on here. This, some people have come in and just, there's no lease agreements here in this building whatsoever. There's no tenant will agreements, there's no lease agreements at all. So everyone is very transient leaving every day and so on and so forth. We'd like to bring stability to these tenants. Give them a good, clean, well-veined building. A little less space, but the rent is in a place where people can actually come in and afford. Studio units in the city are running somewhere between $1,700, $1,800, $1,900 a month or considerably less than that. So we hit a local rent area that we feel, that's why they're always full. We feel like, you know, there's a need for this type of a smaller unit versus a $1,700, $1,800 rent. So that's what we're proposing. You know, we're proposing the first floor to be regular apartments, not SROs, six regular units. We feel like we fit everything by code needed through inspectional services to meet that need as well. And that's what we're proposing. We currently run some buildings in the city like this. It's been very successful. We've run this on Fifth Street. I don't know if you have. This, I'm sorry, I didn't make pictures for everyone. But we currently just did a building across the street on 52 Washington, which is directly across the street, which has a share of a fourth of the units in there as well. This is a little bit different, but this is, we wanted to keep this historical look to the building. So we went up two floors and tried to blend and keep it all looking the same. These two other buildings were buildings which were on Fifth Street. One was the old Duranian Ruling House, which we went through. We completely renovated. We did this concept, which was a hit. We don't have one vacancy at all. You know, we offer short-term tenancies. We offer longer-term tenancies. But from what I heard from the previous city manager and also city council, not council, but city attorney, they prefer a more stable type of a person rather than a quick in-and-out type situation. So we have, we offer two, but a majority of the tenants we have, they never want to leave because we really don't do massive rent increases or whatever the case. So they've turned into longer tenancies, which is fine with us. We just don't want to say, hey, you've been there for too long, you have to leave. So these were a couple of buildings that we've done. That's 21 Fifth Street. And this was also the old building that was on Sixth Street. This was the same owner as Hawthorne. And there was a barroom on the bottom, was the Cueros? Cueros? Barroom? I can't remember the exact name of it. But so this was originally done as well. So when we've done this concept, it works, it's successful. The last meeting, a gentleman came up and talked about displacement of people. But I don't really know. They said they were representing the city as far as expressing their opinion on displacement. But as I said, in this building, there is not one written lease agreement in this building whatsoever. Tenant will, long term, absolutely nothing. So I don't know when they're talking about displacement, if they had a chance to actually go and do their due diligence before they come and talk in front of public television and say they were displacing people. Because that is not the case.
How long do you think the renovation would take?
An average renovation of this size, I'd say a minimum of a year.
And where do the tenants go in that year?
They would have to leave the building.
And it's only for men, correct?
No, we offer men in. Oh, yeah. See, that's the, that's the air of all these old, you know, these rooming house situations where it's, hey, we only allow men. We don't go by that rule. It's men and women alike. That's why, there are men and women here now that are here for a day, three days, four days, five days. So it's being one like a hotel. So you basically show up and he just says, okay, give me, give me two weeks upfront. No written agreement whatsoever. And they move in. So there's cases here now where if you start running it like this, like in, for instance, in this building, the police have been involved in there. There's a prostitution regulatory on there because people are just coming in and out of here every night and every day. By providing them with their own facilities and underwriting properly just to make sure that, you know, they qualify for this type of unit, you eliminate that older rooming house characteristic whereas people come in and say, well, sorry, we only allow men. We don't, we don't. You could never say that to anyone. Why can't a woman come in and rent this? I mean, all the units are separate, they're different. I, we don't believe in just saying, no, I mean, if you're a woman, you can't live here. Well, not in this day and age. So this is why we come in and we renovate doing what we do so a man or a woman can have their own privacy.
Could you clarify what the difference is between the apartments on the first floor and SROs on the second and third?
Sure. I mean, they're necessarily really the same. They're the same sizes and so on. We wanted the SROs to be on the top. We wanted your apartments to be in the bottom because there's an existing store here now. The license that was transferred, they only, they granted us for 12. So is there a difference in how people live? No. So we don't say, well, you live in an SRO versus a unit. So therefore we're going to give you less. Everyone gets the same. But it's just how we set it up at the bottom levels. Like for instance, the one we have on Fifth Street. We live the same concept where we put residential apartments below, the SROs were above, but they all go to the second. Yeah, there's no difference. Yeah?
First of all, I just really love what you're doing. I think it makes a huge impact on the family homeless settlement.
Correct.
So housing is really important to me. So what you're doing is a huge service. You're doing two ends. You talked about management, making sure that the building is properly managed. That's another safety issue. So I love that you want to change that concept where people just kind of go in and coming out very transient.
Correct.
Along with stability. I love that.
That's right.
And then housing program, how that's run. So one of the questions that I have, it's kind of goes along with the subject about displacement.
Yes.
Because I'm kind of hearing something and I think I understand. What is the process with the people that are currently living there now very transient? What is the process for them to go through and see if they're qualified for that particular housing? Because that really does kind of clarify what the displacement really involves.
It is, it is. So as I explained before, the people that are here now, they're paying about $90 a week, $100 a week. There is no way on this day and age you could provide people with this type of a product and get $300 a month rent for something. But there are no people with registered programs in these buildings now. Unfortunately, in order to get from step A to step B, there's going to be some transition. There's going to be hard transitions. It's not always easy. But in the end, you're going to have more of a stable type of a situation. When you say programs, we do accept the veterans programs. We do accept, you know, RAF programs coming in. A lot of people say, gee, I just don't have the money. But I have a RAF program which gives us three months upfront. Or we have a veteran that comes in and says, hey, look, we can't afford two months. Can you take less? Our answer is yes, because we can give a smaller unit. People will need these sprawling 500 square foot studio units for $1,700 or $1,800. This is a niche market that we've been involved with for five or six years. And like I said, this transition is always difficult. And unfortunately, I can't sit here and tell you that there's going to be people that are disappointed. I can't say that. You know, so we try to work with everybody. Everyone's welcome when we finish the building to come back and see if they qualify. We'll give everyone a shot, everyone a first look. But I'd be lying to you if I could tell you that everyone in that building right now is going to qualify for these changes. I'd be lying to you. And I can't do. So transition is sometimes tough. You know, most of the things we've done in Chelsea, the buildings that have even, they've been so mismanaged that they're, we always purchase them half-full or 75% empty. On this building here, there are so many evictions and everything going on right now currently that I think by the time we purchase it and get it approved and so on, there'll be a very high vacancy factor. We try to work with people and say, well, look, you know, we have to go X or go here or go there. You know, can you help us with a few funds and so on and so forth? And we may do that, you know, for the right individual as long as their story is correct and they're sincere about it and they're just not looking to scam the landlord out of two, three months rent upfront. We'll work with someone like that. But to answer your question to the point is, I think there is going to be some disappointments in some of these tenants in here and...
They won't have?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm so far off the management of this building now. The current people that manage the building is problems. It's a problem. And I encourage you to check, you know, with the police and fire departments on these buildings. You can make your call separately. And I'm sure that the courts, that you'll get on this building will answer all your questions. I don't want to stand here and say anyone's a bad person. You know, just because someone's a drug addict or doesn't make them a bad person. You know, we've all had our problems. But I can tell you, I can't stand here and tell you anything definitive because we're not there right now. But you know, what we offer is, we offer security, you know, security cameras. We offer $24 maintenance. We offer, you know, we clean these buildings daily. People call for a maintenance problem, we're there. Right here, if the toilets are overflowing in the common areas, they don't show up in two days. You know, there's bedbug problems. There's the use of the tenant downstairs. You have rats and rodent problems. Those rats and rodents are coming up to the building right now. The tenants are just, they don't know what to do. So it's not like that with us.
What is the retail on the first floor?
The retail is a food store right now. Deli can produce.
Right, and they're growing.
Deli can.
And I assume from your other projects that renovation of this building does not include any exterior changes?
Well, I don't know. I can't answer that because from what I understand from John, historical wanted to chime in. They chime in on all our buildings. And I wish I had a picture of an old one, but you know, most of it... John, do you have a picture of the building again for any chance? Of the existing area? So most of these older historical buildings in the city, they're brick already. And the really, the only thing you could really change in these buildings are, you see with the vinyl siding and that type. We put a more cementitious material, kind of similar to this. We get rid of the vinyl siding, you know, type of a look. And we put a more, it's either a hardy or a ephesus or a cementitious material there to kind of give that building more of a water and an upgraded look. I just don't like the look of vinyl siding. So we try to work with the historical society on that. But they haven't chimed in yet, so I don't know.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
HDAC?
Yes.
Control?
Ten.
And trash?
I'm sorry?
Trash.
Well, the tenant will be provided in the area for trash. And the management company that we have make sure that those bullet barrels are taken out front, but they're supplied.
Where are the barrels stored?
It'll be in the back, in the back area. Right now it's kind of being just thrown out of the windows and put here. It's just, it's mismanaged, it's not run correctly.
Do I understand you don't yet own the building?
I do not.
Okay.
Nope. I have a purchase facility.
Will you be adding windows to the hallways?
To the bottom?
Yeah.
Yes. Can you pull up the proposed? We have to make sure that we hit light requirements in these units through inspectional services. So there has to be 8% light per room. So these windows on the bottom floor, on the top is more than 8% now. But on the bottom, you can see how we doubled them up in some areas. You have to make sure that you hit that light requirement. That was a sticking point in the city when we were designing this with inspectional services. So answer your question is yes, we're going to be adding those.
Can you go back to the process of qualifying?
Sure.
Is it going to be, is it going to be income?
Yes.
Restrictive?
Income restricted, no.
Okay.
No. I mean, you know, certain management companies have certain guidelines. On situations like this, you have to bend your guidelines. This is not like a market rate retail building. Most of the tenants in these buildings are looking for more of a less rent, not a higher. So everyone's so different. I mean, you can get someone who more than qualifies or you can get someone you really have to work with and take less. We're willing to take a risk on less as long as their backgrounds check out, you know, landlord references check out. We like to make sure that, you know, they're currently living well, that they currently take care of their unit, that currently meet their rental obligation. If you call, if you call a landlord and the landlord says, worst tenant I've ever had, I haven't paid one month rent in a year. You can't take that person because you're just going to inherit that problem. But if they say, look, they're a good tenant, some of us they struggle, but they've never missed their rent, they're good. We take that into consideration. Whereas we're a local management company. My office is in Chelsea. We're not in Boston and New York. So we understand the struggles. We'll take more of a chance on a tenant than I think a bigger management company would. And that's why the building's a fault. And do we have delinquency? Yes. Sometimes we make stupid decisions. But with my daughter here, I can guarantee you she's going to be a little poor on the money. She just started it off two weeks ago. But we do the best we can. I mean, do we have delinquencies? Do we have legal problems? Do we have evictions? Yes. We have a thousand units we run that I own. So yes, I do. But I will tell you, our delinquency rates are much lower than the industry average. And just because a tenant doesn't pay on time for a month or two, doesn't mean they go into eviction. They could become currently stay loyal for four years. If I had a crystal ball, I can answer your question, but I don't have to.
And there are questions on this?
Historical commission has a question.
Yes.
They would like a copy of possession for existing elevations.
Existing?
Yes.
Believe I have it.
They're concerned too about the loss of the storefront on the first floor that relates to the first, the back wall on the first floor. And also concerned about closing off the windows.
In the front?
Oh, in front and on the side.
The sides are open. We have doors and windows on the side.
But it looks like you're closing off the windows on the eastern floor.
Yes.
The second and the third floor?
Yes, we are. Because we can't fit, the units are only 200 square feet. So if I put a window there, I could keep the window. Someone's going to back their bed and be against the window. That's why when I was working with inspectional services, I had to make sure that these windows hit and correct them on the light. We just, we can't allow putting, we don't want to allow putting beds against the window. So this is just highlighted now. When the building is finished, I can guarantee you these two windows aren't going to drastically stick out and make a difference on this whole elevation. These are the only windows I ever think that are.
Then what about the last of the front?
Could you go to the first floor? So, I mean, could I add a window and put the squishy kitchen around? I really don't know. But this is the area that they're questioning. We've added a window here and also a door here. The reason why this is like this because it's the kitchen that's against here. I'm not really sure I could rearrange this unit. I don't know.
Before you do, do it up here.
Yeah, but what do you put there?
An office.
An office.
Make take that commercial aside.
Well, you could put a bureau on the wall. You could contest.
Or a transom, a window up high. And a chair against the wall. It's also sort of a safety concern on Hawthorne Street side. You might want to elevate the so height. And if you're not meeting the light calculations, then you could do a transom above the door or maybe...
A transom above this door?
Yeah. John, who did the elevation?
And put what here? Or windows here?
I was referring to the Hawthorne Street side seat above the doors. You can get some of the light, but that would allow me to raise it so high.
You mean transom lights here?
Yeah, yeah.
Could do that.
On both sides. But the concern I would have on Hawthorne Street side is privacy because that so height looks like it's only three feet up.
I think we wouldn't be able to, since it's only a kitchen here, I believe I could put a transom lights above here, break that out. It's a problem with that.
Can you do anything with the electric boxes there?
The electric boxes are out of my jurisdiction today. The reason why we threw the electric boxes is if you could tell the electric company where to put those, I'll go along with anything they say. But they won't get to put them here on the side because it's in that walkway area. And if they encroach, they don't allow them to encroach. The building here is a lot line, it's a lot line. So on this side, there's absolutely no room. If they let you put them, I think, if they let you put them inside, I would love to put them inside somewhere, but I don't think we're going to have, I don't think we're going to get approved. I mean, I could ask them, I could request it, but I'm almost 90% sure they're going to say that's what we want on the issue. Because the reason is, the electric company, crazy as it sounds, wants the ability to go and shut off people's electric if they don't pay their electric. So most of the time, on some tenants that don't pay, it's well-known fact that they walk around the block nets and they open up electrical doors and disconnect people's electric or gas or whatever the case. But that being said, it's a good question because it's only showing four. It's going to be a bigger bank than that. So to answer your question, John, I don't know that yet. That's the historical, I'm definitely concerned about that.
I'm not surprised that the historical commission is seeing seconds of parking happening there.
I wish I could control that.
I think it's a great project and it's bringing a great service. And I'm right on the edge of ordering a guest.
Okay.
Because I think what happened on the first floor there basically destroyed some of it.
Yeah, that's turned into a big thing of meters there. And it really prevents you from doing something nicer. That'll dictate the whole of the side. So I would like to advocate for something around the Hawthorne Street side and if they're...
The side here. The side?
Yeah, just around the corner. But it's not the front.
In the alleyway?
The right side of that elevation, yeah. Right where your finger...
This is only, this is only a three feet wide, like three foot. I don't know if I can get a little bit more pass up. So...
How many meters do you have?
Well, it's either we put everything on a public to eliminate individual meters, which we can do. We could probably put, we could probably lessen the meters by a lot and actually put a house, we could actually probably put one house meter instead of 16 different ones. And we could probably pay for the electric. Could manage that to deal with one meter instead of 16.
Yeah. I just can't imagine changing that facade to just showcase a bank of meters on all this work that we do.
We could probably do one meter and put the electric in the rent. But I think you're going to, that's where the meters are now.
Yeah, that's, I found a picture on Google Maps and that's, they're shown.
Yeah, they're there now. That goes up into the market street. This walks, this is existing.
Yeah.
This walks into the building now. But like I said, I could probably add one meter instead of all these here. I could probably do one meter instead of they have four here. I could probably do one.
Yeah, you know, obviously the big issue is the blank wall.
Yeah. What about transom windows? Where would you add some windows here?
No.
Okay. I have a lot of room there, because the cabinets are only...
What if you switched the door? And made them enter onto that second street?
The door here?
Yeah, made it two doors, so they balance.
If I put the door here, I probably don't need the door over there.
Correct.
John, can I see the floor? I'm sorry, I can't. So, you mean the door here?
Correct. And then you have wall inside that unit. Blank wall would be on the other side. Maybe you can grab me another story to get it up.
So, we could put, we could put transom windows on the top and we could put a door here and we'll close this door. I believe it'll work, because if you come in and open your doors to the left, you can still clear the kitchen, you can still have the lighting on fine as well. So, I think you could do that.
Yeah.
Go with that.
Go with that. It'll be a lot better than certainly destroying the structure.
Just maybe not stop the door. It's probably a wooden start, door, it's always, where you go.
Unfortunately, it's not that easy.
Yeah, no.
I don't know if it's for an existing building or show or proposing it's a lot better than existing.
And then put a tree between the two doors.
I wish it was that easy.
What was this mystery out there?
Yeah.
It's mid-east or on the...
Would you like to see, would you like to see a little office here instead of a residential?
This housing is so important in Chelsea.
That's what we're told.
I think even one unit is, at least one unit is too, is still is too much. And I think, I like this project a great deal and I think, I understand, you know, I understand what the historical commission's gonna come, I mean, I agree with what you want.
Yeah, I understand.
But, I think there's other things you can make. Like, I think you can move the door, you can put an awning on it. Like a light hanging, of course, that's what I came up with it.
Okay.
You know, I think there's lots of things that can make it more fun.
We'd be open to probably putting a door here, like you said, and the transom windows. Lessening the electrical on the outside, putting one meter instead of the existing three. I think, I think that'd work for us.
Yeah, I think it would improve the situation.
I agree. It looks like a blank wall. It looks like a...
Yeah.
I think. Yeah.
That's why we want bright, blank walls.
That's true.
So, is it possible to include all three of those items as a condition of approval?
I can't control the electric. That's something I can't control.
You can't control it's same all?
I can, I can rest assured that I won't split all the electrical. I'll do one. And I'll include that. What I can't control is them saying that it's not gonna go where it is. It's extremely difficult to deal with. Just follow what you have for national grid.
I agree.
It's like dragging into the abyss. But we'll do the best we can.
I'm only saying we will. Well, the product, yeah.
A lot of things are going on, supply chain right now, national grid is up to here.
Have you looked at putting them in the vastular?
We'd rather it inside, but they don't allow it anymore.
Because of, they need to...
Accessibility and codes. You're gonna notice all the...
And they wanna be able to read it electronically.
They wanna be able to drive by and read it and open the door. What's really been affected is gas. They don't allow the gas meters inside anymore. They want the gas meters three feet off the building, even if it approaches on some municipal land. They go and try to get a, something, a condition, whereas they want the meters, gas meters, right in front of the buildings now, which is hideous. They don't even want them in the basements anymore.
Shutouts are outside.
Shutouts are outside. They wanna, they wanna control non-bays, which is unfortunate.
Is there a gas on this project, or just, we're talking about electric meters or?
The only, the only gas here will probably be the central water system. So, the problem will be gas meter. I don't know where that's gonna be. Gotta figure that out. But worst-case scenario, we could probably do electric. I just have to check with mechanical engineer information. I wanna make sure that if everyone's taking a shower at once, you don't get phone calls and say, "Hey, I got no water". You just wanna make sure that they don't run out of water every morning at 7:00 a.m., 7:30 a.m. But that's something I'm sure we could work out with our engineer.
Where are the windows? Down the fourth floor.
The windows?
Yeah, second and third.
John, can you go to the side?
You mean where the ones that go in the way?
I mean the ones that...
Oh. Uh, I don't, they have to go the elevation.
Is that part here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, see, this is in the middle of the wall. They're mostly, they're mostly at the demising walls. These older buildings are always built with an abundance of windows. Were you, were you able to start putting micros in and so on? We did the best to maintain all the windows we can, but unfortunately a couple have to be separated.
So, I don't see how removing that or keeping that right there in dangerous window. Do you mean that it's in the intersection of the wall?
Yeah, it's in the demising wall.
But you could leave the recesses in the brick.
For what?
So, there's some sort of shadow line?
Oh, no, we'll make sure it's done. When we, when we apply another exterior application, you won't even see where it was. It'll be completely...
Oh, okay. I thought that was just...
No, no, you won't see.
Like air...
No, no. When you apply the material, you won't see where it was. It won't look like a block of window. You won't even see it whatsoever.
Other questions, comments? Do you need a variance for any?
Uh, I do, I do. I need a variance for the first floor.
Oh, which is in the detail?
Yes.
First. Okay, motion?
I have a question for John. If we choose to apply a condition that an entrance is up front at the facade and add some... What are they called again? Transom windows?
Transom windows.
A transom. And what if the, what if the, if store brick commission isn't into it? And for something else, is that gonna come back to us?
No. Your vote is a recommendation to the ZBA.
Okay.
We would have a ZBA vote. And they happen to be poured in such a way that we favor this type of stuff. And we're, we're working with us, the historical commission, to try to make it. Bridges work, our performance abilities, and he's very good at it.
Cool. Thank you.
Is there a bus stop right about five feet?
Um...
Well, it's up...
I think it's...
It's up in the square. Okay, I'm just thinking of one person at a particular unit with no privacy that might... I agree, it's that thing what you're suggesting for the two minutes.
I think it's about 20, 30 feet in the square. There's actually a vastular to sit and wait for the buses, which to us is a huge plus. People can get on that bus, they can watch the silver line. That's why Chelsea is what it is.
Okay, I would like to recommend this project. Conditions that we have mentioned, the windows and the door.
Do you think the conditions are applicable?
Yes.
Lighting plan?
Correct.
And what?
And just that one?
I will second that motion.
On favor?
I...
Thank you. Is everyone going home, or am I the only one? There's one more. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. You have luck.
Thank you.
Second, please. 22-1. 244, 245, Arlington Street. On your food box with Tishner, so they're represented. And you need to identify yourself, your address, and then you'd like to hear your, the basis of your position. The nature of the position.
My name's Philip White. 34th South Street in Metford, working with the front creation of Broadway in Chelsea. We have a subcontractor team here as well, and we explain more of the physical and structural changes. But we are building a survival center at the corner of Sixth and Arlington Street right now. We're calling it the Survival Center, because it is having a few different functions, housed within the facilities on the site. Starting from the left, you can see that building all the way on the left. That's an individual workforce development center. And that is for strictly educational and employment activities. An office and school-type setting. And then the bigger building you see, taking up most of the block there on the left side, there's the food pantry operations. So, people can process the garage bay door and then loop around to the back of the building. Stay within the fenced area of the block for any time that they're waiting. And the center, those main doors with the awning that you see, that is our main triage center. So, people who are coming in for any kind of emergency services, educational services, to enroll in mass health, really whatever they need, that would be the entry point for general inquiries. And then, in that far right section of the building, as you can see, those four windows to the right, that is the kitchen space. So, the kitchen space is divided between strictly educational portion and then also entrepreneurship portion towards the backside, where you see those two windows on the right end, and then it switches to the upper. Just to visualize a little bit how it's separated. So, the teaching kitchen is slightly smaller and the entrepreneurial kitchen is slated to fit about four different entrepreneurs operating at the same time. And this is the place for them to get out of their homes, have a formal place where they're helping out, service safe, OSHA tips, and if you have required certifications, well, some that we just feel that they should have, getting into a formal catering type space. And they don't do a 14-week boot camp before anyone has access to this space where they can actually do some cooking. So, there is a thorough onboarding period for people to access that entrepreneurial side of the kitchen. But the front section there is going to be facilitated by NGH, Antedina. That will be focused on nutritional aspects. So, every week it will target our boxes that are coming out of the food bank. And we're calling that section the community development kitchen, because we'll be showing people how to make the healthiest, most nutritious, most tasty things out of what we get in the food box each week. Aside from that, there'll be general cooking classes, so showing you how to make adipose, bursa, slightly more nutritious, maybe a little less fatty, use a little less lard than usual. And really just focusing on the health and nutrition aspect in this building. So, people are transitioning from an emergency-type of service scope all the way to an entrepreneurship and economically local scope services within this type of thing. And what else appeared today we talked about specifically, changing that back right on. About the, yeah, let's see, on this side. Yep, right there. So, this was a parking area, a lot of taken garage. And we're hoping to turn this space into a concept. The Zbo area, mostly for people who are car-stalling through the food bank area. So, they'll come out that garage bay door, which is slightly blocked by the trees there. We're looking at that exit door, that's in the middle, the triage center. But most traffic will flow down that area to the right and people can rest in the class of that, because if they've been waiting for the food line for a few hours, they don't know, just get some water and take a rest. Not on food days, we're expecting this to be just a community hangout spot, for people to play games, to meet each other. Sometimes we'll have, we'll do ASL classes, Spanish literacy. And anything that is a little too technology-dependent, we're looking forward to having some, some time inside that to, to share a community space. And then behind this picture, kind of facing us, the exit. And that is a gate that will be closed every day during business hours. We follow the same schedule. And this area is also my area of interest for the kids as well. So, no one has access when our operations are closed. But everyone is free to come, whether they're in the food line or not, during the community hours.
So, what do you feel you explore with this, with Zbo? That's a change, you pull the main side, kind of this is a change in the side. Kitchen, here we go, will be addressed by the ZBA, if they're next meeting.
So, this space was originally a local contract?
It was second one, I assume, for chicken.
No, I just, I can't recall from the original plan. What was this space?
There's a little bit of parking space and a horrible-looking shed.
But as the plan that we, that was originally recommended, had included this as part of its parking? So, in other words, the number of parking spaces available is decreasing by how many spaces?
We are keeping, I think, three parking spaces right in front of that new shed, new gazebo. In addition to the rest of the other parking spaces that are in front of it.
So, my question is, will there be a loss of any parking spaces with installing this gazebo?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have, in fact, yeah. I don't know if John can represent the plans, but we have plans here to show you the rest of the building. There are five sets here. So, this is that area there. So, that is that area there. This is the new proposed, right here. All this is parking spaces, in addition to all these parking spaces. And this is like an alley access between the two buildings.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Can you just describe, what's in front of us? How someone circulates through and...
Yeah, this is a huge sidewalk around here, and you can go around here too. This is all new fence. So, you go through here, through here, through here, and also through here.
So, mostly people in vehicles or pedestrians?
Pedestrian. You can park your vehicle here. You can park your vehicle here, and then you can walk around the building. Can I answer any question?
Um, well, then, so you described how vehicles get in and how a person shows up to the building to...
Yep, there's a gate right here, there's a gate here. There's another gate here, and another gate here. And obviously, the main entrance here for the vehicles. Very accessible to...
But entry into the building, will it...
Right, right.
Okay, so anybody, kind of entering gates from the back? Okay, so anybody kind of entering gates from the back, will it come around to the front?
Yes, yes.
So what's going to be the process for entering the entry? Is it going to be through here?
Right, right here and also the back.
Okay.
This is the kitchen. There's a teaching kitchen here and the main kitchen, as we call it.
We have any concerns with security access?
Ah, yes. I can't talk about, I'm not the general contractor, I'm assisting with the managing of the construction.
I'm just like the first, simple first one.
But there will be security at the, at these, all these points.
And does it need the minimum rear side yard setback where it?
So the first condition of your special, your site plan is always if there's any change in the plan, they have to come back to you to determine whether it's major or minor. If you determine it's minor, put a note in the file, take a note in the building document, and they go to the market. If you determine it's major, you have a full public hearing.
Basically, that's it.
That's, this is what you're talking about.
This is, this is mine. I mean, there's no, I said there isn't a loss, there won't be a loss in parking spaces.
I disagree. I think this is a very big project in the sense that the, this pantry is incredibly busy, going to be incredibly busy. I think there's other things they could utilize the space for, particularly parking. I think gazebo is very nice and very, you know, very nice thing to have, but I think in this space.
Never before, like, how, how are you defining it as being a major change in this?
Because I think it's because of what it takes away. I think it takes away space that could be utilized for the projects. I can't figure out why they did not have a gazebo in their idea to begin with. So I, I mean, I like gazebo, don't get me wrong, I like outdoor spaces and things like that. But I think the point of this facility is to train people and teach people. And also, this is an outside facility, so no one's going to use it in January, February, March. So we have very limited time on what access it can be used for. And I just think there's other things, that's why I think it's a major, you know, difference.
Can I say something? We are basically putting this new structure back to where the existing shed that we have here. So we're not.
No, I understand what you're doing. I guess.
Yeah, so we're not.
I just disagree with what it is. I think the shed.
I mean, we can put the shed back, but you have to work it.
Because I think there's, inside there's incredibly lack of storage inside this building. And, you know, for paper goods and things like that, paper goods are incredibly bulky. So you got, when you look at this storage space inside, you're going to see incredibly shrinking things. I think this, I mean, again, it's beautiful. I like the idea of an outdoor space, but I think it's, I think you could use, I think the shed could be more utilized for what you guys need and how busy this place is going to be.
So you're okay with us putting the shed back?
No, it wouldn't be a worst word.
Because we, we need to, we need, we need to utilize.
I, I think, that's why I think it's a major thing because I think it's, you know, it's, it's nice, but it's underutilizing what you could be using in this shed.
John, are you allowed to consider that? I mean, that, you know, whether or not we agree with the use in determining whether it is a major form of nutrition?
Not, not the kitchen use, not the use of the building. That is the CBA. There's, we're looking at the site plan, which is usually safety, flow, all the space, landscaping, light.
Would you call that demantable structure that can be disassembled?
No, this, this is a permanent structure, just like the shed that we have before.
It's important to note that most of our visitors are coming on foot and waiting in line for their free to leave out or something. So a shady place to rest.
It's a shed, it's hard to.
No, everything I ask is, is new, it might allow for some flexibility for how they use that space in the future if it was to not.
But it's a combination.
Yeah.
No, I, I.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the question, is this a substantial change to the structure? And I don't think it's a substantial change. Sure, I potentially prefer other things. I don't think this is a question of preferring other things. Is this a drastic change? I don't think it's a drastic change.
And I'm not sure that we really have the authority to make a ruling on.
On use.
How this space is used.
Just did that question. I just said you don't want to make it on. It looks like ten minutes ago. So anyway, that's my opinion. I understand, I'm going to be about it, that's fine.
All right, motion?
I will make a motion that this constitutes a minority motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
On favor, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you in the office. For the kitchen use. For the, for the kitchen, yes. Okay. I wasn't impressed that we brought up all that today, but if you were. All right, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, finally, last one of the things. A presentation by Mr. Train on the MBTA Communities Program.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, members of the planning boards. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening an update on the MBTA Communities Program. So my name is Alex, Chair of Services Director of Housing and Community Development for the city of Chelsea. And many of you are familiar and hearing murmurings about MBTA communities. So tonight, the goal of the presentation is to brief you on the state's MBTA communities programs, including the city's obligation under that program. This will consist of a series of steps the city will have to undertake between now and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, to bring a zoning district with a client to these new state requirements. So in order to embark on this undertaking, the city has partnered with Barrett Planning Group, the urban planning consultant, joined by Judy Barrett, their team this evening, who will walk us through what this program is, what it means for Chelsea, and what we have to do in this summer.
Great, thank you. So John, I'm going to go to the slide, so I just like, I'm just wanting to get a little bit of skin up for the future. So I'm Judy Barrett, and I'm joined this evening by Lauren Lynn, who is working with me, I'm sorry, I want to put my pen to you, who's working with me on this project. And I have to tell you, I'm really happy to be back in Chelsea. I worked on the housing needs assessment in two thousand seventeen. And I was always impressed with this city because unlike many of the communities that we work in.
And she was great, I thought, at the same time.
Is this the city where everybody cared, officials cared about the people who live here? So it's very gratifying to be back. So I have a different role tonight. We are here to talk to you about this law that was passed about a year and a half ago and sort of what the city's obligations are under it. So I think, John, if you want to go ahead and advance to the next slide. I'm going to do an overview, kind of who we are, the agencies involved, because we're not the only partner in this. An overview of the guidelines that communities have to follow to be able to demonstrate that they meet the requirements of the statute. There is a model that's involved in which you literally look at the area that's proposed and determine that it statistically complies with the requirements of the law. And then talk a little bit about where we are, we're looking at compliance possibilities for Chelsea. And then I can take any questions, which I will try to answer. And if I can't answer it tonight, I will get an answer to you. So why don't we go on to the next slide? So for starters. So for starters, the partner who's not here this evening is Massachusetts Housing Partnership. Chelsea applied for and was approved to participate in a program called the Complete Neighborhoods Program. And it is through Complete Neighborhoods that we are here working with you. So Complete Neighborhoods is an initiative through MHP, I'm going to start defaulting to acronyms and I apologize, that MHP is working with a limited number of communities in a very intensive kind of technical assistance way over a period of a couple of years on reinvestment, on, you know, thinking about ways to sort of connect residents and businesses around mobility to promote this concept of the complete neighborhood, sometimes called the fifteen minute neighborhood. The first round of recipients approved, including Chelsea, the citizens of Brockton and Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh also happens to be one of our clients. And then a couple of smaller consortia out in western Mass and then in southeastern Massachusetts as well. So for Chelsea, we're here working on the MBTA communities zoning and also the possibility of what may become kind of an amendment to the city's urban legal plan. And we're still sort of talking about what that might look like. Anyway, so they're kind of a funding source, and I just want to acknowledge that they are part of this process. Next slide, John? So I'll do an overview of the law. You could just go on to the next slide. This law was passed in two thousand twenty-one as part of the Economic Development Bond Bill. And the law is fairly broad in some ways in terms of what it requires, and then in other ways very specific. At minimum, it requires communities that constitute an MBTA community, which I'll get to the definitions here in a few slides, to have a district of quote reasonable size. In other words, an area that it would likely be developed if it would be for as of right multifamily housing. And this, this concept around what's an appropriate location, what's a reasonable size, and how many units the district should be programmed for, again, gets back to this concept of the complete neighborhood where one could live, work, access mobility, and have most of your needs kind of met within a confined geographic area for those who choose to live in that type of neighborhood, sometimes called a mobility town. Next slide, please. So under chapter one sixty-one A of the Massachusetts General Laws, we have the entity of the Mass Bay Transportation Authority, fondly known as MBTA. That's the statute that creates the MBTA and authorizes it. And within that statute, there are defined types of communities that are considered beneficiaries of MBTA service. There are the original fourteen that hosted transit service, so which you are one. There are other communities that joined along the way when commuter rail was extended. There are communities that, according to this particular law, abut those towns. So you may not have a train station in your community, but you're right next door to a town that does. So those abutting communities are considered beneficiaries of the MBTA system. And then there are some other communities in the district that at some point along the way said, we want to be an MBTA community. And to about a question, we're sort of added to the statutory definition of an MBTA community. That all predates the quote MBTA communities law that is now requiring the development of these multifamily districts. So any community that falls into one of those categories is now subject to this law. Next slide, please. So you're going to see different colors on this map, and that's because the communities that are subject to the law are grouped into different categories, presumed, and they're really based on the kind of service that they have. So you're in the rapid transit group, don't surprise, and that, you'll see as I go on, has a certain type of requirement and a timeline associated that's a bit different from some of the others. There are communities that are considered commuter rail. There are communities that are considered so-called adjacent communities. There are some smaller towns in the outer rim that are adjacent small towns. They have kind of the least burden, if you will, under the law. And as you can probably imagine, as you get closer to the city, as you get closer to more populated areas, closer to where public transportation exists, the expectations of the law's success are greater. Yes. So I'll try not to say DHCB. It's hard because we've called it DHCB for so long. But what used to be the Department of Housing and Community Development is now the executive office of housing and living in communities. And they have a very important role in this, in the implementation of this law. Because when the legislature passed what is called Section three A of the Zoning Act, the MBTA communities law, a lot of responsibility was placed onto the state agency that we fondly call now HLC to come up with guidelines to help communities figure out how to comply. So HLC is responsible for and has produced guidelines that essentially tell communities, these are the things you have to do to be able to have a district that will be approved as qualifying under the statute. And the essential pieces of the statute are really the ones that are listed here. You have to have a minimum gross density of fifteen units an acre. Am I, oh.
Thank you, that was my.
Oh, okay. So all the statute says is, you have to have at least fifteen units per acre gross density. The district has to be a quote reasonable slot size, undefined, and within a half mile of a subway or train station or a ferry terminal where possible. You could probably imagine that with that sort of limited direction in the statute, some agency had to step in and make sense out of this, so communities would know, am I there or not? So HLC became the agency responsible for creating these guidelines. And the guidelines are far more complicated in detail than those three bullet points up there. But HLC is also responsible for, in addition to guidelines, say, providing technical assistance, providing funding for communities to comply, and to coordinate the efforts of a variety of agencies that are also involved. In addition to consultants like mine, the regional planning agencies are involved. There's just a lot of different players who are trying to make this law work. And HLC is sort of the overseer of trying to coordinate all those efforts. Next slide, John? So what the guidelines say is, yes, you have to have multifamily housing as of right at fifteen units an acre. You may require a site panel view. You can't require a special permit. The district of being a reasonable size has a meaning. In most cases, it's fifty acres. That does not include Chelsea because the, the, the actual land area is really a function of the size of your town. So it's either fifty acres maximum or one point five percent of your developable land area. And then a zoned capacity of up to twenty-five percent of your, your community's census twenty twenty housing stock. So this is, this is detail that's been put into the guidelines that's not clearly in the statute. If somebody had to figure out what reasonable size means, somebody had to figure out what's really a productive district. And that fell to HLC. The other things that are in the guidelines are that you can't limit the type of household that's going to live in a multifamily unit in one of these districts. So you have to be able to provide for housing for families and children. No limits on unit sizes or number of bedrooms and so forth. Of course, a developer can propose to do whatever thinks the market will bear. But your zoning can't restrict the unit type or who's going to live in the units. The district has to be, the zoning district that we're talking about has to be within a half mile of public transportation, if that's possible. Not all communities can meet that. You can. Noncompliance with the law disqualifies communities from receiving grants like Mass Works. There may be some other penalties involved as well. But the statute clearly says Mass Works and other grants sort of become ineligible if you don't comply with the law. So even what does compliance mean kind of became a complicated topic which fell to HLC to determine. Next slide, John? So there are things a law does not do. Interestingly, while it requires you to have the zoning in place to provide for fifteen units an acre as of right in a district of reasonable size, if nothing is ever built in that district, it doesn't matter for compliance purposes. It may matter for planning purposes, but it doesn't matter for compliance purposes because the law does not require production. It requires zoning. It doesn't require you to pay for infrastructure that may be necessary to support the development of that housing. That may come with Mass Works rent, it may come from development or whatever, but the community is not on the hook to pay for infrastructure improvements. The law does not override other state laws such as the Wetlands Protection Act or the Environmental Code. It doesn't provide. It doesn't provide for options for waivers or exemptions. So everybody who qualifies as an MBTA community has some degree of responsibility to comply under the statute. And again, it varies largely by the size of your town and its proximity to public transportation. Those things really determine the degree of responsibility that you have for zoning for a certain type of housing production. And you can just go on from here. So the compliance guidelines have a number of details in them, and I don't want to drive you crazy with this, but I do want you to sort of understand how complicated this can get and why it's not something you can just do on the back of an envelope or just write a district that says, "We're going to allow 15 units an acre and we're done." So I mentioned earlier that there are these four categories of communities. You are a rapid transit community. Why this matters, among other things, is that there are different compliance deadlines involved. And the assumption is that the rapid transit communities have the most urgent need to comply, and that's why your compliance deadline is the end of this year. Most of the other communities involved, like in the commuter rail areas and so forth, are at the end of next year. And then we have some very small towns that are sort of adjacent to the adjacent, that are just really very small communities, and they've got another year to figure out how to comply. So there are these tiers of compliance involved, and you're in that first group. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, that district of reasonable size has a meaning in the guidelines. It's not specific in the statute. It's developed in the guidelines. The concept is it's the lesser of 50 acres or 1.5% of your developable land area. So that's why in Chelsea it's not 50 acres because your actual area of your city is pretty small. That minimum growth density is 15 units based on what is considered developable land. So it's not just the land that's on the ground. It's actually, is it developable? And there's a procedure for determining what developable actually means. There's a minimum unit capacity that is also part of the guidelines, and that varies by community. It's essentially based on how many housing units you have in 2020 and a percentage thereof is the target. And I'll show you your numbers in just a minute. At least half the district must be comprised of contiguous parcels. And that gets to this issue of what's a reasonable district. So if you had a district, imagine, that was just pockets of land all over the place that really didn't constitute developable area, that would not satisfy the law. So in developing the guidelines, HLC came up with these metrics for what's a reasonable area. And the concept is at least some of this has to be contiguous. So you could have more than one, I'm going to call it a 3A district because 3A is the section of the Zoning Act that was amended by the MBTA communities law. You could have more than one place in your city that's a 3A district, but at least half of it must be contiguous so that you have a meaningful area within which one could build. And then in most cases, you have to have a contiguous area of at least five acres. So even if you have multiple 3A districts within them, you have to have land that's contiguous at least to five acres so that you have a meaningful developable set. Next slide, please. There is a formula for determining how much of your district has to be close to a transit facility. And that's based on how many developable acres in your community are within the half mile of your rapid transit home or train station. And then all this table shows you is how much of your land, what the percentage is. So if, say, for example, you had 400 developable acres within a half mile of a train station, then at least 40% of your 3A district would have to be in that area. What the law does is it gives you some flexibility about where the district goes, within reason. If you have transit, the law prefers that you have the district close to transportation, I think for obvious reasons. Next slide, please. How many units? So this was another question that came up early on from communities. So the minimum requirement is essentially it's 750 units. Now, that's the minimum, and you'll find that in a lot of communities. A lot of the suburbs that have commuter rail, 750 units is the minimum requirement. But for communities with more housing stock, the number goes up. So it's capped at 25% of that number of housing units you had in 2020. So your number is higher than 750 units. John, next slide, please. Thank you. So for Chelsea, what all this means, you're a rapid transit community. So your 2020 housing count, according to HLC, was 14,554 units. Therefore, the minimum capacity that your 3A district must be designed to support, to enable, is 3,639 units. Your minimum district size is 14 acres, which is 1.5% of what the compliance model determines to be your developable land. Minimum growth density, 15 units an acre, that's statutory anyway. 75% of your district must be within the station area, based on that chart I just showed you a few slides ago. And you have to have your district in place by the end of this year. Those are the basic overview of Chelsea requirements. Next slide, please. So growth density is the term that's used in the statute and it's the terms that's used in the guidelines. And it has a particular meaning because it's actually defined in the Zoning Act. And so growth density is based on how much land could be built on in a district where the district density includes things like the right-of-way of a street. So you're not going to build in the right-of-way, but the right-of-way is part of the delineation of the district. So the formula for determining whether you comply excludes certain types of land. So the actual density that you need to reach is based on what the model would call feasible developable land. But you just need to know that in addition, it is also paying attention to this excluded land. So you may have a district that looks a little bigger than what you actually need, but that's because you're including things like right-of-way and so forth. The way you get to kind of the total unit capacity for the district is, what's your total unit capacity that you have to reach, that 3,000 units I mentioned before, divided by the total land area of the district minus excluded land. That's basically the formula. And I just decided to leave it written out instead of trying to put pretty graphic there. But it's basically a division. It's just a division exercise. And that's how you get to, you know, whether you're complying with your growth density requirement. Next slide, please. So this is another thing that tends to be confusing sometimes. So the law, the focus of the law is zoned capacity. And what that means is, do I have a district that is zoned in such a way that one could come to you and say, "I want to build a multifamily development. I need a site plan approval." And because your zoning says I can build 15 units an acre here, I can actually build 15 units an acre. The model doesn't care, the guidelines don't care, if it's a vacant site, if it's got existing buildings on it, if it's an underdeveloped site. What's on the land today does not matter. It's whether the site could be proposed for 15 units an acre of development without any other impediments in the zoning. And I think that's the easiest way to understand it. Is there anything in the zoning that would prevent someone from coming to you to apply to build 15 units an acre? If there's nothing else on the zoning, you should be home free. Now, there may be other constraints, but what this cares about is what the zoning says. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I think it's a quick question. What if the party is interested in constructing offices or something?
Excellent question. So there's nothing that says the district can't allow other uses, but it has to provide a 15 units an acre of multifamily or more, depending upon, it gets complicated because you've got this total unit count that you have to hit as well. So actually, 15 units an acre is a bit of an illusion. But whatever the density is that you need to have to get to your total unit yield that you must have, the 3,600 units I mentioned before, whatever that is, if the zoning says you can build at that density as-of-right with a site plan approval, or you can build offices, or you can build a widget factory. It doesn't matter, but you have to provide for the multifamily housing.
Just one point, sorry, the 3,000 numbers, does that factor in anything that already exists?
No. This is the other thing.
So if we're close to meeting, I guess I'm trying to understand.
It doesn't care what's on the land now.
Okay, but if we're trying to comply.
You have to have zoning.
Are there? Then how is that measured?
It's not, because the law doesn't care what's on the land now. The law cares about whether someone can come to you, propose a development of 15 units an acre as-of-right and build it without any other impediments in the zoning. It doesn't matter what's on the land now.
So it's just going to be modifications to the zoning by, that's all of it?
It's basically what it is. It's basically what it is. I'm trying not to oversimplify this, but I also don't want to overcomplicate it because it's complicated enough. The more we get into the weeds with this, the more it makes our head spin. It's really, this concept of zoned capacity, it's do you have an area that is zoned in such a way that one could build that number of units, regardless of what's on the land now? It doesn't care if you already have 3,699 units. What cares about is can someone build up in the future?
Okay. One question about the.
And don't shoot the messenger, right?
Yeah, what about flood zones? Is that excluded from the developable land?
Big, big issue.
Getting into the.
So, yeah, I was going to get into that, but since you brought it up, I'll get to it now. So originally, the scare was you can't, the floodplain is like excluded land. And we all went, "What do you do with your Chelsea?" Or a whole bunch of other communities on the coast. So HLC's position is, if you have a floodplain, there's nothing that bars you from proposing your district in a floodplain. The floodplain zoning you have has to make it possible for someone to have reasonable assurance that they will get a special permit under your floodplain zoning if they meet the requirements of the floodplain ordinance. So typically, a floodplain ordinance says, "If you do the following things, you know, you'll get a special permit." Now, some communities make it much more conditional and tentative and so forth. So what HLC is looking for is a reasonable assurance that if someone is building in a floodplain, if the district's in a floodplain, that they will get approval from the city to be able to build, provided, of course, that they meet the floodplain requirements in addition to the zoning for MBTA communities. So we have wrestled with this as well, especially in your community because the area we're talking about is in the flood zone. But it seemed like it was the appropriate planning area for the city, and I think what we have to do is just defend it to HLC. There's plenty of other issues that HLC is going to have to worry about. And I think it's really just going to come down to whether we collectively think the floodplain ordinance is sufficiently clear that if one complies with the design requirements of the floodplain bylaw, they will get the special permit relief that they need. And I'm looking at you, John, because I know you can answer that question.
The floodplain zone or what, that prohibits construction in a floodplain? It just manages it.
Right.
Puts conditions on it, and you can meet those conditions and mitigate any impact. You can construct it.
That's correct.
And then wetlands. Or floodplains or.
Right.
Okay, but coastal is different than inland flooding? Or the way that it's regarded is.
No, I'm just saying that the original thinking was if you've got any kind of 100-year floodplain, you're going to have a problem. And that's not what we're being told. I don't care whether coastal or not.
Okay, disregarding it as far as how we count.
It's really how the floodplain bylaw is written or ordinance is written.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Moving right along. Zoned capacity is this concept of I've got a chunk of land in a district. I've said you could build 15 units an acre here. There's nothing else in the zoning that would impede that. That's the concept. Zoned capacity is not a requirement to have units built. So even if you already have them, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter that it's built either. It's not concerned about existing units, and it is able to take into account some other requirements, such as, under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, there are certain areas where you simply cannot build. That's not changed by this, but that's not zoning. Floodplain ordinance is zoning. Wetlands Protection Act is a state, will not separate. Have I lost anybody yet? You following me? I'm trying so hard. Okay, next slide, please. So just some opportunities and limitations to be aware of. The permitting can be subject to site plan review, as I said before. I don't know any community that would simply allow a developer to go to the building department, get a building permit, to build 15 units an acre of multifamily housing without somebody looking at the site plan. You can use site plan review, as I think you probably all know, to regulate things like, how does the access work in the site? Is there sufficient separation of pedestrian and vehicular circulation as to provide for public safety? What is the design? You know, looking at exterior architectural design, screening of adjacent properties, open space on the site, and so forth. Those are all valid site plan review considerations. And you, as a community, can exercise that kind of review. What you can't do is use site plan review to deny a project, which I don't think is probably a surprise to anybody here anyway. If a use is allowed as-of-right, you cannot use site plan review to deny it. That's no different with this. Another thing about this law that I know has kind of rubbed some communities the wrong way is that because the law is focusing only on multifamily housing, there is no explicit authority for you to require mixed use as part of the housing. You can encourage it. There's been lots of talk about ways that a community might encourage upper-story, you know, above top of shop or above, upper-story housing. It's basically by giving amounts of density incentives. So you can do that, which you can't require. You can't limit the multifamily housing to mixed use. You certainly can consider ways to incentivize it. And that's a policy decision that we can certainly talk to you about more as we move forward. Next slide, please. There's another issue around affordability that I think may be challenging for Chelsea. The guidelines that HLC has produced say, the 3A statute doesn't have any authority to require affordability. It's not there. But we know, I'm speaking as HLC, we know that most communities in Massachusetts have some kind of inclusionary zone. So if your inclusionary zoning applies to like up to 10% of the units in development, HLC will approve that and not question it. It's when you go over 10% that you start to run into a problem. So what they have said is that they will approve an inclusionary zoning provision for an MBTA communities district, up to 20% of the units being affordable. But you have to prove that it won't make the development uneconomic. You have to approve that the development of multifamily housing will be feasible, that the inclusionary requirement doesn't become a barrier. So there is now a whole protocol for doing an economic feasibility analysis to show that if you want to go up to 20%, it won't be an impediment to development. And just to help you understand what the 20% comes from, there is another law in Massachusetts that encourages communities to provide for multifamily housing. It's not a mandate. It's called Chapter 40R. And under Chapter 40R, communities can require up to 20% of the units to be affordable in a multifamily development. So to try to make the laws sort of consistent, HLC adopted the 20% standard. Affordability in this context is not limited to the way affordability is defined for, say, the Chapter 40B comprehensive permit. Or by the HUD guidelines, communities can adopt whatever definition they want and affordable. So that's another issue. But the real issue is you can't require more than 20%. And if you want to require more than 10%, you have to prove that it's not going to be a problem. So we're in the middle of kind of looking at that now. I think it's going to be challenging for Chelsea to be able to apply its existing inclusionary zoning to this district. But I'm not prepared to say it's impossible. I just want you to know, I think it's going to be difficult. Next slide, please. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about this model. It is based in Excel. If anybody doesn't like Excel, you would not like this model. If you love Excel, you would just have a deal date with it. It works with data that we get from geographic information system databases that come from MassGIS, which is the state GIS library. The model is like nothing I have ever seen. I mean, literally, all 175 communities that are subject to this law are programmed into that model. So you can select parcels in your community that you want to consider for a district and plug them into the model. And the model's going to be able to help you figure out how much land is kind of sensitive and maybe difficult to develop, what land comes out because it's excluded, helps you figure out for any given set of density and dimensional parameters, will a district produce the number of units you're required to provide at a minimum density of 15 units an acre? you're required to provide at a minimum density of 15 units an acre? I can actually tell you, in most cases, 15 alone doesn't do it for a variety of reasons. It's, we haven't worked with a community yet where it just comes out perfectly that way. But, you know, you're plugging in things like, you know, the minimum lot area per unit, the how many parking spaces you're requiring, how much open space. And the model magically tells you, gives you a number. It says, you're here or you're not. And so you can get a sense of how much change you need to make to your own existing regulatory scheme to get to a district that's going to work by working with this model. So that's just an easy explanation of it. John, I'll go to the next slide. I wanted you to see this, because typically when we draw a zoning district boundary, it looks like the picture on the left. Here are the boundaries of the district. We're going to say, this is 15 units an acre in this zone, and it's like 50 acres. We're there, right? But that's not what the model does at all. What's on the right is what the model actually looks at, which is each individual parcel. So if you have parcels in there that would not meet the density requirements that we've set, say you want to require a minimum of one acre for a developable site. Well, if you don't have lots of parcels in there that are one acre, they fall out. So you have to really think about, how am I writing my density standards so I don't knock out half this district? The model is looking at this on a parcel-by-parcel basis. That's how it tests whether you're going to get to your land area, your unit yield, and your density. Next slide, please. The other thing it does is it takes out certain land. So that green over there, you probably can imagine that's what Mass GIS interprets as land that's subject to the Wetlands Protection Act. So all that kind of comes out. So if you have, again, there's multiple ways you have to comply here, one of which is that sort of five-acre contiguous area. Well, if you've got too much excluded land in there, then you all of a sudden don't have perhaps five contiguous acres. So the model's weighing a lot of different things that are embedded in HLC's guidelines in order to give you a picture of whether you're going to actually be able to comply. And that's all that, those two maps are showing you. Oh, I've got this cool district, this would work. Well, it may not, because now you take this land out that is excluded, and all of a sudden, you may have areas that are not five acres or more. Next slide, please. Some communities have asked about this. It may not be of interest to you, but I guess we just like people to know about this. You can have a district that has sub-districts. Because perhaps you want to have a different sense of density on the, on the street than you have behind the street. So if you want to have a sub-district that is 12 units an acre, you can compensate for that reduction with density somewhere else at 18 units an acre, as long as you average out overall 15 units an acre. That's what the model cares about. So it's just something to be aware of. That you have a little flexibility in how you design the dimensional rules of your district as long as you get to that 15-unit acre target. Next slide. This, I mentioned this a little bit earlier. You can have non-contiguous areas, but at least half the district must be contiguous, and any part of the district must be at least five acres. So that's just sort of an example of, the sort of lighter blue circle you see is the area around, that's considered the developable area around the train station. And you've got a chunk of a district in that area. But then you've got this other satellite district off to the, to the side. That's okay, as long as half, at least half the area is contiguous, and any part of the district is at least five acres. Next slide, please. So we're into this, working with the staff. They've been incredibly helpful to us. This has been a really educational experience for us, in part because the area that we're looking at may also need, may also involve an urban renewal plan amendment. So if you just go to the map after this, I can kind of show you, and part of that is, the map over on the right is just the flood, flood zone, because believe me, we weren't really paying attention to where that was. But over on the left, there's a, that sort of orange shaded area. Part of that is your existing urban renewal area, and part of it is what we're calling the sort of expansion area. And that's sort of the area we're looking at to do the 3A district. And I think that we're probably going to have to have some initial conversations with the state around the timing of an urban renewal plan amendment versus the zoning. The zoning itself does not require you to go and get the urban renewal plan amended. It's when you're going to activate urban renewal tools to affect the kind type of development that you want, that's when perhaps we need to be talking to the urban renewal plan folks. But we're kind of looking at both of these things together, so we don't set you up to have a really great zoning tool that then you can't use as much as you might have wanted to. So we're modeling this now, you know, talking to the staff a bit about some of the issues with that area. But I think we're pretty close as to what would work. And that's a question of getting some policy input from the city so we can start to draft a zoning district and get something in front of you that you can act on so that you are in compliance by December 30th, 31st, 2023. So we're working away on district, the actual district area, modeling it, what the dimensional, dimensional regulations should be that will work, and also trying to assess the feasibility of using your existing inclusionary zoning policy versus something else. So that's really what I have to cover this evening. The next slide is just discussion questions. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments you may have.
So if that's to be adopted by December 31st, your deadline for getting into the council is October?
Pardon?
If it has to be adopted by December 31st of this year, your deadline for getting into the council is October?
I knew you were going to answer to that. That's, yeah, I had a figure, big feeling, John, we were up against that.
Because council has to refer to the planning board, get the planning board at least two weeks modified, I mean, it's a planning board. At the latest, we'll have to hear about that. Meeting in November, which is usually the fourth week, but if that's Thanksgiving, we do.
I don't think that getting the zoning drafted and ready for those timelines is the issue. I think that there are some other policy considerations that have to be talked about. But having the actual zoning to comply with 3A, I don't think that's a hurdle. It's my opinion. Other questions? Alex, I'm looking at you and Carl, and John. Did I like totally forget something here?
No, I think that was a good, sort of broad summary of the law. So Judy mentioned the urban renewal plans. I do want to provide a context as to the existing plans that the city has to file. This is separate from the zoning ordinance here. So as was illustrated in the last slide. John, would you mind pulling that map back up? Awesome, thank you. So the area that is shaded in red here is the area, essentially describing the market basket site, commuter rail station, and some of the surrounding areas, you know. Essentially, everything to the north of that purple line from here on up, give or take, is part of an existing urban renewal district. And after during the late 1990s, the urban renewal district sought to ask for a mix of commercial and industrial development. What the market ended up generating in that particular area was a lot of higher-end development by the Chelsea Fox site. So what the city is aspiring to do is to amend the urban renewal district to allow a broader set of commercial, like industrial uses, as well as to allow mixed-income housing, so we can start creating some affordable housing stuff in that district. There are certain tools that that unlocks for the city, including financing options that can make a development more attractive, as well as increased tools related to land acquisition and other methods of redevelopment. So that is one sort of parallel trap we're exploring right now. It isn't necessarily required under this 3A zoning. At some point, I imagine the state is going to say, hey, you adopted the zoning, that complies. However, your renewal plan isn't harmonious with it, so we should bring that into alignment. But that's, that's kind of the backstory on the plan itself. Other than that, with regards to the 3A district proper, Judy highlighted the conflict with our inclusionary housing program. And the state created a policy governing inclusionary housing programs that was a lot tighter than the programs in Boston, Somerville, Chelsea are. And so that's something we're going to muddle through with the state. I think before we acquiesce and say, okay, we're going to lower those requirements in Chelsea, we're going to want to engage in a dialogue with the Commonwealth to see what latitude they might be able to exercise, particularly in this district where there isn't a lot of development, there are a lot of undeveloped parcels, and there is an opportunity to create a truly mixed-income neighborhood with a range of housing options. We would see it as a missed opportunity if we didn't include a diverse range of housing types. So that's, that's everything on those two items. Carl, do you have any other items?
Our one other frustration that we've been repeatedly pushing back against the state on is the conclusion of mixed use. And we feel it is just bad urban design to create large-scale housing without requiring any retail to be incorporated into it. Particularly because we're in a floodplain, we don't want any residential on the ground floor. We want other uses that won't make people homeless if the area does happen to flood. So we're working through that, and we're looking at ways to. No, what we do will be above this 15 units per acre threshold, but we're looking at lowering some of our thresholds that we were using in the mixed-use overlay district, which originally we were just planning on expanding. And lowering those thresholds and then giving density bonuses for additional housing units if you activate the street state.
Yeah, the same would be for, for increasing affordable housing stuff. You know, there are some strategies that we can employ to incentivize a greater concentration of affordable housing, a greater concentration of family housing or other building types and uses that may align with the planning board's policy goals. So for instance, that could be considered for kind of resilient buildings, or that could be considered for deeply affordable housing. I think there are ways that we could structure the zoning, so there are some incentives in there. So there's this like baseline set of requirements that can apply to the state. And then there are all these incentives that allow for, you know, a more realistic attainment of the goals that the city have.
How do you mean the market basically to sell? How are they going to sell?
They want it back.
Oh, the market basket site. So, yeah, we're in dialogue with the owners of the market basket site presently. The city is in the process of renegotiating our memorandum of understanding with them. With that said, our understanding is that the dual family seeks to be a long-term property holder in the city. We don't imagine that they will be selling the property outright. They have expressed a willingness to discuss partnerships that could yield redevelopment, so things like round leases or other joint ventures. So I think that could be passed forward there. They're not real estate developers, though, so it's, it's hard to say the least. But that is one of our major priority development sites right now.
That whole concept of incentives is totally fine. State is fine with incentives. You know, when you think about 15 years an acre isn't that dense? You know, you can write up much higher density than that and probably get what you really want. But you're not the only community that's frustrated around the mixed-use issue. I think the irony of this is that when you talk about complete neighborhoods or mobility hub, I mean, all the graphics for this are about businesses and homes and, you know, transit, and, and what we can't touch the issue of the mixed use. And it's, it is frustrating from the planner's point of view.
It's, why? I mean, why did they put that in?
Because they said that the 3A statute doesn't provide explicit authority around, to address anything around commercial development. So their interpretation of the statute is that it intends to get multifamily housing built. So that's the baseline. And then anything else you can do is really a function of policy and what incentives you're willing to offer to get what you really want.
It's also really hard to do commercial development now. I, you know, you're either going to have a restaurant ghetto over there, you're going to have a nightclub. You're not going to have any, you're going to have services because it's, so it's, the idea that you're going to have a scandal store there is, or Macy's, not going to happen. You know, the converting, you know, labs and stuff like that, that's the only thing I could think of. But, you know, you could put a parking lot over there, which everybody would be in South Radio, which I didn't particularly like, but, you know, but I get it. But I sort of have, it's, I get what you, why you want mixed use, because you want some kind of life on the street. But the problem is, how much can, how much can the city support, you know, restaurants? How much, how much restaurant ghetto can you get? You know, and how much, you know, nails and hairdressers and spas can you support? You have to have services in their various little, because that's not how people shop anymore. So unless you want to bring Amazon in, you know, what you feel about that? You know, so that, so I think it's, it's a little bit more complex than just saying we're going to build. If you build, you know, like Kevin Costner, if you build it, they will come. I think those, you know. So I have sort of, you know, daycare centers are a good idea to put in there. You know, things that, well, community centers, things like that. But the idea that a, you know, a store's going to go in there is going to be really tough. It's going to be really tough. I think grocery stores are, you know, everybody buys their groceries online. It's frightening how much people buy groceries online.
I think that what you're saying is partially why HLC has been elected to, to go there on, on, on requirements use, because what they're hearing from the development community, the real estate investors, is there's just, it may not work. And so you end up putting multifamily housing at risk, if you will, not getting built, because you're not requiring something that the market may not be able to support. Not justifying their decision, I'm just explaining to you what we.
Put it there, but I just think it's. On mixed uses.
Any other questions or anything? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I guess like, this is pretty confusing, to be honest. But like, it seems, my understanding, like, it's going to impact a lot of the less dense, probably, towns and cities. Like, is that like Brookline? Like, if someone buys like a wooden box or something like that, and if they were, they wanted to buy, like, developed basically, they're going to be property, like, it's, would they be allowed to based off of these requirements? Or?
If the zoning exists to provide for at least 15 units an acre and meets all the other requirements, then one could do that on an asset right basis. And yes, places like Brookline are freaking out about it.
Isn't there one? That's only three. Isn't there at least one community that has come out and said they will not comply?
There are four.
Okay. Because, for those reasons. Because they do not want it to change the character of their single-family hometown.
The Attorney General said she will prosecute them aggressively.
Yes. And what actually happens, we don't know. But my job is to help you comply. That's why we're here. So unless someone tells.
I'm struck a little with the end goal of this whole thing. And, and their vision for the whole state.
More noise and stuff.
It's obviously more density in less dense areas, probably.
Yeah, I think they've had a lot of issues with suburban communities with commuter rail service permitting any type of apartment buildings. And this is a kind of stick after they've grown carrots up for years. Since those carrots.
I, I agree. I mean, we have suburbs with wonderful commuter rail service and that simply won't allow anything but a single-family home. And at some point, the Commonwealth has to be able to assert a state interest and say, you know, where there's public transportation and there's this public benefit, communities have to share in that benefit. And this was, I think, the way, as imperfect as the law is And this was, I think, the way, as imperfect as the law is in terms of its kind of overly gentle kind of qualities, it is, it is really probably the most significant statement the state has made in terms of a commitment to try to get, to remove regulatory barriers to housing, probably since 40B passed in 1969. There hasn't been another thing like this. Anything else has been sort of the incentive, carrots, we'll give you money to pass zoning, are we generous? But, but not at that point, so. So you'll be seeing more of us. I'm not quite sure when we'll be back, but soon.
What, of course, would, would, just, have over, but it's probably not the situation in Chelsea, but in Brookline or something like that.
Well, that's an issue, because they're not, they're independent of zoning. So, you know, you could have a zoning district that meets, that checks all the boxes for MBTA communities, but isn't an area that's subject to a different regulatory scheme, and that's not touched by Section 3A. It's a good question. I mean, Brooklyn is one of my clients, so this is a dear, dear topic for me. It, it's a challenge. Are we done? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you! I got a couple, I was very nice to her.